Welcome, everyone. We are opening the council study session for May 22, 2003 at 6:00 PM at 111 East Maple Avenue in Independence, Missouri. So the first presentation we're going to have is a presentation on a dangerous and vicious dog ordinance and ordinances. And Mr. City Manager, I will turn it over to you to start that process.
Be glad to. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As requested, our Health and Animal Services Director, Christina Heinen, is present this evening to give the council a presentation on what current city code says in regards to dangerous, vicious, and aggressive dogs, as well as some information about potential recommendations for further strengthening of city code. So without further ado, we'll ask Ms. Heinen to come forward and update the council.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Christina Heinen. I'm the Health and Animal Services Director for the City of Independence. Tonight, I have the greatest pleasure to provide you a review of the aggressive, dangerous, and vicious dog ordinances, and we'll also discuss possible options to enhance the city code and improve safety. Do you need to down? The aggressive, dangerous, and vicious dog ordinances are located in Chapter 3 of the city code. Historically, we only had a dangerous dog ordinance up until 2017. Aggressive and vicious sections were then added to allow for greater enforcement and flexibility for handling a range of events that might occur. In 2022, 115 of the 3,358 cases handled by our officers were either aggressive, dangerous, or vicious. Now, many people use the terms aggressive, dangerous, and vicious interchangeably when talking about dog attacks. However, in our code, they mean very different things. I'm not going to get into all of the details of the code regarding this section. However, the basics are: An aggressive dog is one that's displayed aggressive behavior or attacked another domestic animal with minor injuries inflicted. Aggressive behavior may be chasing a person or charging a person. It all depends on the circumstances. A dangerous dog is one that has injured a person or caused severe injury or death to another domesticated animal. An animal may also be deemed dangerous if it has been deemed aggressive in the past and has committed another violation. A vicious dog is one that has caused serious bodily injury to a person, caused death to multiple animals, or has previously been deemed dangerous and has committed another As there is a range in severity to the act or injuries inflicted by these different categories, there's also a range in the outcomes for these cases. For dogs deemed aggressive, they must be microchipped, spayed and neutered, kept confined by a six-foot fenced enclosure, and any new owners must be made aware of their status. For dogs deemed dangerous, there are quite a few requirements that must be met for the animal to remain in the city. Dogs deemed dangerous require an annual permit, signage, insurance, spay neutering, microchipping; they must be kept secured; they must be muzzled if on a leash. It's quite an extensive list. For dogs deemed vicious, the animal must be removed from the city or euthanized. So that's the current code in regards to aggressive, dangerous, or vicious dogs. We were also asked to present options to enhance the code and discuss the pros and cons of each. A spayed or neutered animal is less likely to be caught running unrestrained, and evidence shows that they're less likely to become aggressive. Our ordinance could be amended to require spay neutering for different groups of dogs, whether it's all animals, whether it's those that have committed or have been found guilty of animal code violations, or even just those that are left outside unattended. The last option is very similar to our cat ordinance, which requires the cats that are let outside be spayed or neutered. Now, although spaying and neutering is closely linked with reducing aggression and the inclination to run, it is also very expensive currently, with many local vet offices quoting $400 or more for a medium-sized dog. Many area vets also have long waits for surgery, with some scheduling clients out over a month. Another option would be requiring microchipping of dogs or certain groups of dogs. Although this doesn't make a dog safer, it would be relatively inexpensive. It would also allow for stray dogs to be quickly reunited with their owners and allow an owner to be held accountable if that dog was involved in an incident or acted aggressively. A third option to consider would be an ordinance that limits the time an animal can be tethered or chained. Nearby jurisdictions such as Lee Summit and Liberty both have such ordinances already in place, which could work well in our favor and reduce confusion among our citizens. Additionally, tethering is strongly linked to aggression in dogs. When faced with danger, if an animal cannot flee, it will fight. Therefore, dogs kept chained are more likely to act aggressively to protect their limited space and resources when confronted. However, enforcing such an ordinance could be incredibly time-consuming for our staff. Finally, training can be highly effective at altering a dog's behavior, helping them become more confident, less fearful, and more trusting towards people. However, effective training classes require a large amount of time for both the owner and the trainer, and can be very costly for the member of the public to attend. As much as we would love to hold regular classes for the public, we currently don't have the staffing available to commit to such a project, nor do we have funding to bring in an outside trainer. Which leads me to one final caveat that I've mentioned a few times this evening: our limitations. Currently, we have four fully-trained animal service officers, which handle all the calls for Independence and all of unincorporated Jackson County and Jackson County parks. They respond to emergency calls on the weekends and after-hours. And as the table on the screen shows, they stay very busy. Compared to many of our neighboring jurisdictions, they are kept much busier with their current call volume. If the current pit bull ordinance were to be removed, it is estimated that staff would recover less than 200 hours per year total. If additional ordinances are put in place, we will need to further prioritize enforcement activities at our current staffing levels. Staff would also ask the council to consider and advise, if the pit bull ordinance were to be repealed, how the council would prefer we handle active investigations and any ongoing court cases. I'll now open it up for any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Christine, I'm not sure you can answer this question, but if not, maybe Mr. Langford can. But what's the penalty for someone, for a defendant to violate this? I mean, what's the maximum the city can impose?
I believe it's $500.
Okay, so if we have a vicious or slash dangerous dog that would actually do severe bodily harm to somebody, is that the max, the maximum the city can impose? But can that be go-to-state charges possibly, or not?
I will defer to our prosecutor.
Sir, there's always a possibility that could state, the state can pick up any charge. That has not happened for quite some time. The maximum fine is $500. There is also the option-
Mr. Langford, if I could ask you to move the microphone, so I've heard a lot of complaints about making sure that we're heard over the electronic services, so if you could do that, I'd be grateful. I apologize for the interruption, and Councilmember, I apologize for the interruption.
No, not a problem. Let me start again.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As I started off saying, the chance of the state taking a case like this is slim to nut. It has not happened for quite some time. The maximum fine is $500 under our ordinance, and that's given any ordinance violation. The harsher penalty for the vicious, for a conviction under the vicious dog ordinance would be that the dog has to be removed from the city or that the dog is put down.
And that's done by, that's by, the state controls how much we can fine, correct?
That's correct. As a charter city, we are maxed out at $500.
So just hypothetically, if a dog were to kill somebody, would the state pick that up?
There's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
Just a question. How are dogs classified into those categories? Who does that? What's the process for that?
So our animal services officers will look at the details for each and every case and decide which category fits best. If there's questions, we'll consult with our city prosecutor. We'll discuss it with the individuals involved in the case to try to get as much information as possible. Ultimately, a judge deems an animal aggressive, dangerous, or vicious.
So for them to get categorized in one of those categories, it has to go all the way through the process, and the judge would classify them in that way?
Yes. An owned animal, it has to go all the way through the process. If it's a stray animal, there is a small section which would allow the animal services director to make that designation. However, most animals that we're going to be writing tickets for, carrying through, we know the owner, obviously.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else have other questions? Please proceed.
I have a bunch. So on your vicious dog, the remedies are euthanizing the animal or removing it from the city?
Correct.
Is there any reason that removing it from the city is required? By the time you reach, the kind of injuries you're talking with the vicious dog, that dog should not be removed from the city and given to someone else. That dog should be euthanized.
Ultimately, that's a decision for the judge. The animal is still property, and although we may have our own feelings about what should happen, ultimately, that's a call for the judge to make and the owner to make.
Questions about the tethering rules? Can you explain what other municipalities have done with that?
So I know Lee Summit currently has one in place. I believe it's you can tether or chain your animal up to 30 minutes each time, up to three times per day.
You know, when you showed the number of calls, you picked some really tiny areas, like Lenexa is a very small geographic area. We have a very large geographic area, including the county, so a much, much bigger, so I think the comparison may be a little bit tough on that slide.
We also did include Kansas City on that slide. We were limited on trying to get the numbers quickly. There are some jurisdictions that do not log their calls the best, the same way that we do. It would be apples to oranges, so we did our best to call jurisdictions, find out how they're logging all of their calls, all of their cases, and doing our best to do a comparison that was not apples to oranges.
And just to clarify on Councilmember Stewart's question about remedy, so there's the question of fine and whether you can bring charges, but certainly, anyone would have the opportunity to bring a civil case against the owner of that dog for injuries. That remedy still exists?
Yes, that's certainly an option.
I'm, can you explain what happens after hours? If I come home at 6 o'clock at night, and there's a dog next door that charges the fence every time I get in the backyard, and I'm afraid to go out and sit on my patio, I, tell me what I do?
So you can call our main dispatch line. At that time of night or evening, you're going to be connected with 911 Dispatch. They're going to listen to the description. They have our policy in place. We do limit, we limit the number of calls we run, our emergencies. So we would be looking at, you know, is the dog actively, you know, are you safe? Is the dog actively charging? If it's in its own yard and it's contained, this is a call where we would get the information. We would follow up with you the next day.
Okay. And I'm now walking my dog, and my dog and I get chased by another dog. Now what happens?
So if the dog were still there, you're still in danger, we're still able to identify the dog, you know, it's there, it's not contained by its owner, you're willing to sign tickets, we're coming out. Often, what happens in these cases, the dog charges, the dog chases, and then runs away. Without knowing where that dog belongs, who owns that dog, there's not a lot that staff can do at that point. Our response time can be 45 minutes to an hour. Getting there in time after hours, our staff have already gone home, they're responding back in. So there's limited, so we would get your information, and depending on the case, if the dog were still there, we would come out as quickly as we could. If the dog were no longer there, we would be talking to you and getting your information to follow up the next day.
Okay. And can you let me know what other cities have done, because there's so many that don't have a pit bull ordinance, and that's really the only thing we're talking about from the council standpoint, for their dangerous dog ordinance? Have you compared our ordinance to other communities?
So we have compared our ordinance to other communities. We did this exercise back in 2017, when we first put our aggressive and vicious into place. We've also had it compared with, by the ASPCA, and some other groups have looked at it. They think it's a great ordinance. We have not had any faults to it. We've also, we've talked to our judge, we've talked to our prosecutor, we've worked to make sure it's still working and it's doing what it needs to, and we've not had any changes been suggested to that section.
Do the majority of communities around us require animals to be chipped?
There are quite a few that do, and for certain groups, but I don't know, looking over, I don't know of a single community that, what? So impounded animals, we, of course, all microchip, and all the rescues and shelters in the area do. But otherwise, for like all groups of dogs or all groups of cats, I can't think of one.
But the majority do have a licensing fee, right? You have to have a dog license?
I can't say the majority. Quite a few do have dog licensing.
Okay, but they don't require chipping? You just have to have the license?
Depending on the jurisdiction, yes.
Okay. Do other municipalities require dog owners for certain breeds to have homeowner's insurance to cover those breeds that they consider more dangerous?
I mean, certain municipalities do, absolutely. I can't say the majority do in our area, but some do.
Okay. And what about muzzling when dogs are out in public?
I don't know of one that requires it unless that that dog has been deemed, you know, aggressive, dangerous, vicious.
So only a dog that's been reported, then they have to wear a muzzle, because that's court-ordered? Got it? Okay. Thank you. I'm sure I'll have more, but thank you for your indulgence.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on that, Director Heinen. And specifically, start off with the breeds. We've discussed, or I've discussed with a number of my colleagues, there are a number of larger dog breeds that are sort of known to be more generally aggressive, or bred to serve in more aggressive roles. Do you know of any other cities or jurisdictions that treat other breeds as well differently?
I can't think of one offhand. I can tell you that surely there are definitely insurance agencies that treat certain breeds, whether it's Doberman, German Shepherd, and limit ownership of those if you want their insurance, but I can't think of a jurisdiction. I'm sure there are.
Yeah. And, okay, I, you know, specifically, I like the idea preemptively. A lot of people in this room may not like it. I very much like the idea of muzzling some of those breeds if they're being walked in Obviously, a dog can't bite if it has a muzzle on. A dog running loose could, but not one that's on a leash. But you don't know of any jurisdictions that require that unless they've already bitten something. But there certainly wouldn't be anything that prevents us from acquiring that either that you know of.
If that was the council's desire?
Breeding. Missouri is famously, probably, the, famously known as a wide-open breeding state. And I don't know if we placed a limit on that, if that would draw some attention from the state or not. Do other jurisdictions, either locally, have any restrictions on breeding for any breeds?
So I know locally, we have, there are requirements that certain breeds be spayed or neutered. There's also locally requirements in our region regarding breeders and meeting certain requirements, maybe not for the, what breed they can breed, but how, you know, their requirements for keeping kennels, keeping everything clean, whether it needs to be inspected by the state, and-
For, so, okay. Can you give me any details on both of those categories? Do you know those off the top of your head?
So I believe Kansas City requires spay neuter, and they're licensing for pit bulls.
Okay.
Most jurisdictions who have an animal services in the area will have some sort of outline for how, whether it's kennel licensing, like we do, or whether it's written as a breeding ordinance. The state also has their own ordinances for how it should be done, and if a municipality doesn't have it in place, the state inspector would be who would come in to ensure that everything was being done as state requirements require.
For breeders?
Correct. Depending on how many, how many animals they're breeding, how many are kept there, how often, yes.
So there are regulations people are supposed to follow?
Yes.
Inside of Independence?
Yes.
I don't believe people do that.
There are people who speed, even though the speed limit is clearly posted.
Well, sure. Well, I wouldn't have any business if that were not the case. And neither would Mr. Langford. Do you, do you believe we could, do we have specific laws for that? Have we adopted our own specific Independence kennel law or licensing?
We have a kennel license that there are some, I don't think we have very many who are currently licensed, but we do have a kennel license.
We just don't have much of an enforcement mechanism, I'm guessing.
We do, if the, well, if someone has a license, we inspect, we do that. We don't get many complaints that someone is doing that. Occasionally, we do. It's just not a very big complaint, and having access to, of course, the inside of someone's home-
Right. No, I get that.
Limits us.
I get that. Okay. We do not have, in our pit bull legislation, just because there's a breed-specific ban, we certainly don't have a spay and neuter.
So any pit bull that is, does come to the shelter is supposed to be spayed or neutered before it's released and then relocated outside the city?
Right. Okay. I do have a question, yeah. And this is only if you remember, a few years ago, when I was campaigning, you remember I got-
I do remember.
I got myself bit in the face. And that, I don't, a case, I don't, I don't think a case was filed. I didn't ask for one to be filed, certainly, because I would have said it was really my fault. In that case, though, that dog wouldn't have been deemed to be any, any sort on the chart, right? Because it was in its yard.
From my memory of the case, I believe you are correct, it would not have been deemed aggressive, dangerous, or vicious. But we would have to go back. I don't remember all of the details of the case.
Yeah.
I remember it occurring, but I don't remember all the details.
Yeah, I just, what I'm leading up to is, is there a way to differentiate in a, in a case like that? It was a situation where there, the dog was in its yard, and I walked up to the fence and was right at its fence. It was in its own area. It wasn't loose. I put myself in harm's way. And in that case, very much, I don't believe it was the animal's fault at all. Is there, is there a way to differentiate in a situation like that versus when a dog is, even if it was on a leash and out in public, versus?
So our city code, and I said I wouldn't go into all the details, but some of the details it does have is it talks about if the person's conducting themselves lawfully in their own space. It talks about the restraint of the animal. It, it talks about the circumstances surrounding that to help make that decision about whether a case should proceed.
Yeah. Okay. I wanted to make sure that was clear, because certainly, that would make a difference. That's it for right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor? Couple of follow-ups.
Well, what I heard was you first, Councilmember Steinmeier, and Councilmember McCandless. So Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
So you talked about dog licenses. Do we have licenses now, or what is?
So we do for dangerous dogs. They must be licensed to remain in the city. We had pit bull licenses for those that were grandfathered in. Sadly, it's been long enough that there are no more that are still licensed as pit bulls, but those are the two licenses that we have.
So we've only basically tried to license dogs that might be aggressive or might be, you know?
Well, we license those that were deemed dangerous.
Okay. Okay.
Back to your scenario, I was intrigued by Councilmember McCandless's after-hours, you know, questions. So let's say I'm, you know, it's a Saturday, and I, you know, I'm out walking my dog. It'd be hard for me to imagine that since I don't have one, but-
In my mind, it's a cocker spaniel.
Yeah, right. I'm walking my son's dog, about that. And so, and, and, you know, dogs get out of a neighbor's yard and attack my son's dog, and, and, you know, and do harm to it. Or, and, and this is, and they've been called, I mean, the people have been reported before in other situations. How does that really get handled from a standpoint of when it's multiple repeated, kind of, you know, situations?
So we don't necessarily look at whether it's a repeat at that moment. We're not, we can't be confident which dog it is until we either get out there and microchip the dog, ID the dog. You know, although it may come from the same address, we can't be sure that they don't have multiple dogs that are all being naughty. If, you know, again, if the dog is, if they jump the fence, attack- If, you know, again, if the dog is, if they jump the fence, attack your dog, and they're still out and they're not being contained by the owner, the owner doesn't run out, contain their animal, we're going to respond out. We would ask if you wanted to issue tickets, uh, you know, make sure that your animal, that you sought vet care for your animal if needed. We would get their information, we would try to make contact with them.
I guess what I'm getting at is...
I mean, a lot of it's going to come back to the exact details of the case when they're...
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is that if there are, if there is an owner, and, and I think, you know, it all goes back to the owners. But if there's an owner that is not being attentive to, you know, making sure that his dog stays where it's supposed to be and it's out regularly, or, you know, they don't have the right fencing or, or whatever, and it's a repeat occurrence kind of thing, what I hear you saying is, is we treat every case, you know, individually on that particular case, and it might not be, we, we wouldn't really, you know, there's not a repeat performance kind of, uh, you know, um, issue here or, or possibility.
So, there, there is and there isn't. As I was talking about before, if they've been deemed aggressive once and the same situation happens again, we would be pursuing dangerous dog charges at that point, and so it would be progressing. We would also take into account if there was a bite between the animals, depending on the fight, we would take into account, uh, for rabies quarantine, whether the animal could be quarantined at home, or if this is a repeat issue where we know this house has a problem with keeping their animals restrained, we would be requiring that the rabies quarantine would take place either at the shelter or at a licensed vet, so that we were sure that the animal was being kept contained as need be until we could get to that court date.
So, in, in that kind of a scenario, there would be some possible language we could add to the code that would allow for, um, the owners to be, you know, addressed maybe more quickly or something to that effect, would that be, am I...
So, we do our best, especially when there's rabies, or if the animal is quarantined, to get in to see a judge as quickly as possible. Our court dockets sometimes are lengthy, um, so depending on the case, on how quickly we're able to get in for the docket, whether the animal is being held until court date also plays a part in this, but if it's a normal unrestrained, it may be several months out before we're able to see a judge. If there's a rabies quarantine in place, we may be able to get in sooner than that, but, and the judge is then able to take into account, it's written in our language, the ability to take into account a stronger fine, a stronger sentence, you know, to deem it dangerous instead of aggressive, depending on their circumstances.
Okay. All this helps, because I'm just trying to understand, uh, the options, and, and I appreciate your presentation tonight, it's very helpful to me, um, as, you know, kind of a, a non-dog person, so, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you. Just looking at the ordinance of aggressive dogs, I'm a little confused by some of it. One in particular issue where it talks about, um, no dog, this is in C.
Okay.
No dog shall be classified as aggressive if any injury or damage is sustained by a person or animal who, at the time of such injury or damage, was a member of the household? So, let me, let me ask you specifically. How many, and you may not know this answer, but I think it's an important one, how many attacks, um, do we know are in the household by an aggressive dog?
So, you're right, we don't know. I, we have the sense that the majority of those cases where a dog has bit a family member are not reported to us. Whether it's for fear of what might happen to that animal, or whether, you know, they just don't want to involve the government, it might be the severity of the wound. The ones that are, require a doctor's visit are required by state statute to be reported back, so our epidemiologist gets those reports. However, when it involves a family dog, we, they, they often do not want to cooperate, which we understand, we know, so I can't give you an accurate number. I can tell you, you know, in general, how many rabies quarantines we see, cases like those, but I know that those numbers are not accurate to, especially for family, family dogs, family pets.
So, if it's reported to you through a medical professional and they don't want to cooperate, what do we do?
There's not much we can do. We'll reach out, we'll start a case, we'll leave door hangers, we'll try to make phone calls, our epidemiologist will try to make phone calls and follow up, but at a certain point, we, we can't necessarily compel them to provide that information.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're having this discussion, because I think that we need to really go through and look at these ordinances and update them. I, I believe that comprehensive ordinances should be based on objective criteria rather than breed discrimination. I've been attacked by a chow when I was going door-to-door. I, I went to a front door and there was a pit bull, and he, he charged the door, hit it pretty hard. I was parked down at the end of their driveway, and he came around, the nav- or the homeowner was outside working on the side of the house, I didn't realize he was outside, but the, the garage door was open. And he took off around there, and I s- I remember seeing that door, so I ran and got in my truck, and it's a good thing I did, because here, here he comes. So, he was going to get me. I, but that, but again, I think that the, the basis of what we've heard is, you know, aggression is not confined to one breed, and we have to be willing to define, uh, and have comprehensive ordinances that are not discriminating against a breed, but we need to look at what dogs do have, um, more of an aggressive nature, and we need to be more, we need, we need to have that list, but when I was doing my research even today, I'd go through website after website and get different lists, there, many of them are the same, but the nu- but how they rate them is so much different. So, I think for us to do anything to remove, we have to have something in place that is comprehensive, where we clearly define what we're talking about, because I think, I think a couple of things, we have to have a collaboration between municipal authorities and law enforcement, uh, agencies and animal control services, and we have to have a protocol of how we're going to treat the investigation, how do we protect the, the dogs, the owners, and do it in a, in a manner that isn't just a, we show up and, and we yank the, the animal. And I, and I'm all for that, um, but I do think we've got to prioritize public safety and the well-being of the animals. I'm not sure we've done that well. And I can understand why folks are upset. So, there's a lot of work that I think that needs to happen with this council to ensure both sides. We're not discriminating against this group, but we're looking at a comprehensive list, and we're doing it from the, our objective is to be public safety's first. And I, and I, I'd like to see us have more range for law enforcement to be involved. And I just want to, I just want to create a safer community, and I want there to be fair policies, and I want there to be responsible ownership, and I want education, and it disappoints me that we are not focusing on that, because when, if we're going to be, if we're going to be adopting dogs now, there's some liability attached to that, and there needs to be education, because every dog's an individual and they have personalities, and, and they need to know how to handle those, and if we're not doing an effective job, then we bear the brunt of that liability as a city, and that's a dangerous place for us. So, education has to be in there somewhere. I, I know you, you agree, but if it's a resource issue, then we better come up with a resource. That's, that's how we keep everybody safe, and that's how we treat, um, the opportunities to have a pet and to be responsible pet owners, we have to have that. So, I hope in our discussion, as we go through and we kind of work through some of these ordinances, that we, we keep those, those components in mind. That's my hope, I hope, and I, I'm sure you share some of that with me. The other thing I, I wanted to say that, uh, it says, it's in our aggressive dog ordinance, excuse me, in F, it says, "A hearing on any municipal court complaint filed under this section shall be set within fourteen calendar days." Do we do that?
We attempt to.
How, how, how are we doing on something like that if we, are we close? I mean, because it's, you know, it says fourteen calendar days of filing or on the earliest possible date available, how does it normally work?
Animal Control does a very good job getting those to us in that fourteen-day period.
Okay. Good. It's, it, because it's stressful for families, so, um... Yeah, so, right now, that's, that's kind of my focus, I, I just would like to see more effort made in that, in that education piece.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember?
I actually was going to ask about whether there's mandated reporting if a physician or the ER gets somebody who has a bad bite, and that triggers an automatic investigation, and you've, you've answered that. I guess my question is, if that's a severe bite and the family doesn't want to cooperate, that feels as though the city has the opportunity to compel the surrender of that dog. You, you have rabies quarantines, you're going to end up with, with that dog in your custody anyway, is that not correct?
So, it would, I mean, depending on the severity of the bite, depending on how much information we get from the doctor's office, because that, that is a range. You know, we, we do our best to reach out, I mean, again, it depends on the severity of that bite. I would like to say that most families, absolutely, at least the ones that we're able to, they, they work with us, they talk it through, we're able to see and talk. Often, you know, this, there's, there's some family animosity that goes on also, that we have to navigate, um, and try to decide, you know, where is it best for that animal to have its rabies quarantine, where is it best to be held? Often, we do end up holding that animal. But these are family pets, and for the most part, if they haven't been cooperating, it's because they love these animals and they want to attempt to either find a new home for the animal, they want to, to work through that process.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, currently, if law enforcement has to respond after hours, do they have any type of equipment to deal with a dog?
I can't speak to that, I know, I, I do not know what equipment they have. I'm, know that some of them have access to microchip readers or things like that, but to actually control, like a control pole for the dog, I do not, I would assume that they have those, no.
They do or don't have them?
I do not believe they do. Look. They might have one, is what I'm told.
They might have one.
Which is probably not enough.
They're not that expensive, we should probably get like ten of them.
They are. They break easily, too.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else, other questions? Councilmember McCandless, you inspired me by a number of your questions, I'm going to follow up if I can, but good questions, and I liked them. On the vicious dog ordinance to reconfirm Mr. Langford $500 state statute limit?
Yes, that's the most we can fine somebody, there are other options for punishment, but that's the most we can fine someone, yes.
Okay, so when we look at this ordinance in more detail, you and I can talk about that, and rather than take people's time up for that now?
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. If we force people to chip the animals based on something like that, how do you enforce it? Obviously, if they've, if you've got them in your custody, then you can chip it, but if they don't, if they're not in your custody and they're not cooperating, there's nothing you can do, if I'm hearing you correctly.
If, if they have been deemed dangerous, aggressive, or they've been found guilty for having an unrestrained animal, any of those things, the judge can order that the microchipping take place as part of the judgment.
Okay. There was a question about license fees earlier, but not a lot of discussion. What are the pros and cons for a council to consider on that regard?
So, pros and cons for license fees, if we're going to, depending on what group we would wa- we would want to require licensing for, if we're discussing licensing for all dogs in the city of Independence, that is going to be very labor-intensive, resource-intensive for the first several years. We also, of course, it has the same pitfalls that we can't necessarily ensure that every single animal is licensed. It also is rarely a money-making thing, and we, we will probably lose money and spend a lot of resources going into it.
Ends up being net negative. Okay. Thank you. And then, obviously, when you've got a vicious dog and they hit the, you know, there, there's a question of, part of the enforcement is getting insurance for that dog, okay, they've gone up the ladder. What do cities typically do for their limits and things like that with regards to insurance? Are you familiar with that, or is that something you researched?
I'm not.
Okay. We can research that and find out. Obviously, if we're going to have a, a dog that comes into your control, and you said spay-neutering obviously has some advantages with regards to people, uh, dogs attacking, so, um, do cities help with the money to do that?
So, we do currently have some grants that assist on spay-neuter, Truman Heartland Community Foundation also has, uh, a fund for the shelter that can assist. It is not a lot of money, our biggest limitation there is staffing. We have one vet out at the shelter, uh, she is kept very busy, and vets are very hard to come by right now. So, we have looked at bringing in a contract vet to assist with maybe even just a week-and-spay-neuter event, something to that extent, and it, it's very difficult to find ones that are willing to come in.
I've had the Humane Society tell me that they have shortage of vets all over the United States, so it's a challenge. Very good. Obviously, with Councilmember Steinmeier's question with regards to education, and I agree with his perspective on that, um, could we collaborate with nonprofits in order to get that done?
We can try, we have reached out and tried many different things over the years, uh, we do have our behaviorist on board, we always tell individuals that when they're done, if they have any questions as they're going through the adoption process, any questions, any issues, reach out, uh, staff will try to assist, whether it's, you know, our behaviorist calling them back, walking them through things. We also have a partnership where we're able to offer, uh, free virtual training for the first, I can't remember, so many weeks, um, one week, I'm told, and then after that, they can sign up for virtual training at a discount. So, there are options that we've tried to offer. And we've had trainers who are, who have come in and voiced that they might be willing to volunteer. It's getting that volunteering for a long, consistent basis in order to be able to have a program that we need.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, does anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed. Thank you.
Um, Director. Councilmember McCandless touched on this earlier. Can we rem- on the, on the, the most severe punishment of euthanization or removing from the city? Can we, can we take that out of the ordinance, removing from the city?
If, if the council so desired, uh, that is currently, um, I know that the judge prefers removal of the city rather than euthanasia at this time, um, it is very rare for the judge to order destruction of an animal.
You know, I talked to somebody, uh, and, and I don't, I'm not, you know, I've been doing criminal defense for a long time, and not to put words in Mr. Langford's mouth, but we, we live in a world of, of one-off circumstances, and every case is different. Chief Dustman knows this, too. No, no two cases are the same. But there can be similarities, and, but I, you know, I talked to a lady at length one day that she ended up with one of these dogs that'd been removed from another city. And how do you know, right? been removed from another city, and how do you know, right?
So, we do our best when, if, if an animal is going to be relocated out the ci, outside of the city, we do our best to give a heads-up to the animal control, that, that jurisdiction for that area.
Sure.
It is, yeah, it's, it's difficult for the next person to, to know.
Sure, but somebody gets an animal and takes it to their friend's house and
Yes.
Takes it to their girlfriend's house, or boyfriend's house, or their friend's house, and, I mean, it doesn't take any time at all for that animal to be completely unknown and a stranger, and it could have literally been a completely destructive animal.
I do not disagree.
So, we can, if we choose, we can take the decision out of the judge's hands and make it a strict liability case. But you're saying there's nothing prohibiting us from doing that, would you agree, Mr. Langford?
No, there's nothing prohibiting that now.
In fact, if we decided to, if you looked at them in tiers, we could even drop those down a tier, if we were going to get really radical about it. I'm not saying that's what we'll do, or that my council, fellow councilmembers would agree with that, but we do need to be serious about this. You know, I know we're in the land of second chances, but second chances where personal injuries are involved can be a dangerous place to be. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a couple more thoughts here.
Of course.
Do we have any type of assessment that you do, you know, regarding the dog's behavior? So, in other words, how, how are we determining how this dog's individual behavior is going to be? I mean, are we, are we putting them in social situations? Living in a cage is not what I would call properly cared for, but, so we have to overcome that. But how are you going to do assessments on any dog that's adopted out from our, from our, our facility at this point, where we can safeguard the, the pet? And the, and just as important as we do an accurate assessment of the, the dog, are we going to do it with the, with the owner? I mean, socialization and where, and taking them from here to here, like Councilmember Hobart just mentioned, you know, they're going to be put into a, a different environment around different people. Any dog has a potential of being protective, it's not just confined to one. How do we, so what, what is your criteria? What are you doing to accurately assess the, the dog's behavior?
So, we do have a certified behaviorist on site.
A what?
A certified behaviorist.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's
I just didn't hear you.
And she will do a behavior assessment. There's multiple points to it, it involves, it involves a lot, everything from using a fake hand to see if you can take a bowl of food away from the dog, whether it's food aggressive, seeing how it does change. She, the staff are all involved in watching for different characteristics for the animal, seeing who can, you know, when you walk the animal, when you take it through the shelter, how does it behave, how does it react when someone else, a new person passes by. We'll have people who are strangers to that animal try to interact, we'll have them walk by the kennel, we'll have them try to feed, depending on certain, I mean, if, if that animal's actively growling or lunging, we, we aren't going that far. But depending, we, we look at the animal in multiple places. We have volunteers who come in and walk, we have volunteers who come in and do what we call furloughs, where they take the animal out, whether it's to go get a pup cup, or to go take a walk through the trails, and see how they report back, how that animal reacted, what happened. Our volunteers are really good at recognizing, especially those that have been with us for years, those, some of which that we inherited from Great Plains. They're very good at it, our behaviorist is good at it, our staff are there, they're interacting with these animals every day, they're putting in them playgroups with other animals, they're seeing how they behave at the fence. We, we look at everything we possibly can. We know that it is not a perfect assessment at any one time, an animal is going to act differently in different environments, but we do our best to get as much information as we can.
And then when someone becomes interested in this particular
We share all of that information that we can.
And then do you do an assessment with them, with the dog?
So, they'll, they'll do what we call is a meet and greet, where the animal comes in, we see how they interact, we talk to them beforehand, trying to find out, you know, what is your home life like, how many, you know, do you have kids that come over, do you, are there older kids that live there, younger kids that live there, do you have other pets? Do your friends bring their pets over? What pets are they? What do you guys like to do? Are you, do you enjoy a more sedentary lifestyle? Are you watching movies on the weekends? Are you going for five Ks? What are you doing with your time? So, we can try our best to matchmake. Is it a perfect process? Again, never.
Yeah.
But is it relatively good? Yes. We, we have a lot of success and very few returns.
Well, that's, I mean, it's, it sounds like we're trying to be responsible, both with the pet and the, and the individual. So, that, I just, I, I can't emphasize enough the, the idea of, of that education piece for the training, recognizing it, and then being able to train beyond that point, too.
Training was the very best thing I ever did with my pets.
Sure.
So.
Absolutely, but you're a responsible pedo.
I try.
Yeah, so, okay, I, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please proceed.
So, I'm just curious, the chip that's in the dog has the owner's name and address and phone number in contact?
The chip has, for most chips, a fifteen-digit number. You then put it into a database, sometimes several different databases, to find out how it's registered, who it's registered with. Then we either are able to see that, view that information right online, or we have to call a phone number, be on hold, identify ourselves, provide that information, then they give us the information for the owner, the, you know, home address, email, phone number. Sometimes that information is not up to date, a lot of the times that information is, and then we'll immediately reach out and try to get ahold of them.
So, my question is, is there a way to put a tag on that number, so that when you call for that information, or you scan that information, there's a marker that says this dog has had a dangerous dog or a vicious dog, judgment against it?
So, if it's already in our system, which is the first place we look, that animal will pop up when we do a search, and we'll be able to then look and see what the history is with that animal, and if there are any flags that pop up. If it's an animal that's never been in our system, if they've never visited us before, that information, I, I've never had a microchip company pass that information along, if they did have it. I would doubt they do from the different microchipping companies we've dealt with, but, thank you.
Anyone else? Other questions?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Liberty has a reckless owner provision. Do we have anything similar to that within our city code that we could maybe use, adopt, tweak?
If, now, the reckless owner, this is one where there have been repeat, essentially repeat offender.
Correct.
We don't have anything like that, I mean, it would be, if the council chose, we could do something like that. Right now, the aggressive, dangerous, and vicious works that way in order to give that step up, and the judge also has that leniency to go from one hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars for most violations, on whether the judge would like to increase the fine amount. And I think Mitch, yes?
If I could chime in on that, Animal Control is excellent at informing me prior to court the status of a dog in question or the dog's owner that's in question, so that I can provide the adequate information to the judge on sentencing. They're very good about saying, "This dog's had a violation in the past, this owner's had these dogs that have had violations in the past." So, in a sense, we do have something like that, the reckless owner, because Animal Control works with me to inform the judge that we need to up the punishment on this particular defendant.
So, with, with your opinion, do you think we have a, a good, strong, tight, working relationship which would get to you to present your case for the city in front of the judge, then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Very strong relationship.
I, just to follow up, it might be worthwhile just to, to do a dive, to see if that's a provision that we can sit in our code. As much as I, I like you individuals, we're not going to be here forever, so maybe to have something solidified in code, so for future, future times, when we're not all here, that we can use that as a thought. So, but thank you for, for this communication as, as we stand right now, but I would defer to my colleagues that may perhaps we look at reckless provision for that.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember? Okay, Councilmember?
I just, if, I had, I have someone in my district that works in the insurance industry, and she sent me an article that, that said that the average dog bite payout was sixty thousand dollars by insurance companies. They only want to do that so long. So, I, I would like for us to have a little more information on what should we look at for ordinances, for insurance requirements on just any aggressive breed, not one, but if you own these dogs in Independence, that there has to be some type of liability insurance that, that goes along with it. So, if we could, if you can find that out, that would be good, too.
I can, yes, I can certainly try.
I can give you the name of this individual if you'd like.
I know we've had this discussion back in 2017. I know we spoke to a couple of different insurance agents about if there were certain breeds that they limited, or did they increase their, the amount that a person, a homeowner would have to have? And it was, it was varied, I'll say that.
Well, and, I, I'll just, from, from my perspective, I have a neighbor that has an American bull mastiff, and if he had his way, he would turn me into kibble. I mean, he attacks that fence every time I come outside. And, and I worry about my grandchildren, my dogs, my wife, even myself, but I, I carry an umbrella policy. I don't know if she does, I, I, I'm, we, it's always a contentious point, but, but I, it doesn't cost that much, is my point. You can get it, and it would cover us. It's kind of like uninsured motors insurers that we're all required to have. I just, I want to make sure that if, if there's an incident, that people are properly cared for, that, that you don't end up losing homes and assets and all the things that, that are there, and these are real concerns that I think we as a city have to at least have the conversation about if we're making any changes. So, if any information you can gather for us to have more of a comprehensive look, and give us the information so that we know where we want to go with these changes in the ordinances would be beneficial.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I have, I ran across that issue in reading about some of this. I know State Farm, at one point, covered every dog, for whatever reason, it, they were typically had a hundred thousand dollar policies, so whatever that's worth.
Anyone else? Other comments, questions? I want to say thank you, Councilmember, for not highlighting a particular agent to give them advertising free on city space, so thank you for being restrained. Mr., no, yes, Mr. Steinmeier. I appreciate your restraint there, so well done. Particularly if it's a friend, it's hard to do. Director, thank you very much, I appreciate it. If there's no other questions, and I think we're good, is that correct, Mr. Walker? We have 7:07 right there, let's come back at 7:15, and we'll start our city council member, city council meeting at that point, please. Thank you. And I will call this meeting adjourned. And I will call this meeting adjourned.
Any at all. Um, so we scheduled to meet. Um, he showed up, had three different puppies that I choose from. I, I saw mine immediately. Um, I named her Lily. From two thousand and two to two thousand and eighteen, Lily and I shared our life together. Uh, we, we did it all. We had our great moments. We had the moment she ate everything. Um, we, this dog truly taught me life. She taught me responsibility. Um, at sixteen, I realized very quickly that I couldn't go out with my friends if I wanted to put a roof over my dog's head. She just taught me how to live. Um, in two, two thousand and eighteen, I had to make the difficult decision to, to have her put down. Uh, she had rea- reached her end of her lifespan. And, um, that doesn't get any easier, no matter who says it does. That hurt will always be with you. Um, and fast forward to two thousand and twenty-one, uh, was, uh, July first of two thousand and twenty-one was my very first day as owner operator of Lily's Play and Stay. We are a doggy daycare in Belton, Missouri and boarding facility as well. Um, in the last twenty-three months, July first will be two years. So in the last twenty-three months, we have been so successful that I have now a team of twenty, um, that I provide a check for every two weeks. Um, they have a solid employment. I heard a lot of words today that are core values of our business. Um, education, we're all about teaching our, our, my employees and our clients' education. Um, we're all about, uh, teaching them socialization skills. We take a lot of pride on Lily's at being able to care for pets that don't do well in traditional boarding facilities. We don't allow a dog to come in and just sit in a room, no matter if they're social or unsocial. We do a temperament test for every single pet that comes through our facility. We will make sure if they are in a social situation that they get to play with other dogs. If they are not, we don't just leave them in a kennel. We make sure that they are socialized through treat puzzles, through walks, anything that will stimulate the dog to ensure that he's gonna have a safe stay. Um, about six months ago, um, I started looking for my second location. I've, um, don't really have a certain city that I was tied to. I live in Grain Valley. My first location is in Belton. Um, I really just wanted to find the right facility versus tying myself to a certain city. Um, I found that location here in Independence. It is a, a building that needs a lot of love. Um, it's gonna be a, a lot of money to get to where it needs to be. Um, but unfortunately, because of this ban, I hesitate to move my business into the city of Independence. Um, I would definitely like you guys to reconsider. We do so much to be able to help rehabilitate the pets that come through. The team that I have in place had no pet experience, had no pet knowledge before my training with them. Um, I now have a, a great team and we do so much in the community. The facility that I'm looking at now is double the size that I have. I currently made five hundred thousand dollars in revenue last year. I do expect a million dollars minimum to be able to be made at a facility of the size I'm looking at here in Independence. I hope that my experience here today, my personal and professional, will, uh, will help you guys see that this is, uh, not necessarily a breed restriction that we need, but more maybe a pet or a person restriction.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda is Kenneth Love, Mr. Love. If I'm correct, you have a very timely topic.
Good evening, Kenneth Love, one-six-eight-zero-eight, East George Franklin Drive, Independence. Mayor, Council, I hope you don't hold this few seconds of time against me, but I would like to request each and every one of you, even the mayor, city manager, to pull a dash cam camera from an officer where it took, this incident took place this past Saturday, um, so they, all y'all can witness, see for yourself of what I'm about to talk about. Moving forward, tonight we had the director speaking about the rules of dangerous or vicious animals. In the way that they are classified, I don't wanna disrespect anybody, but I'm gonna read a comment from three different people that has messaged me that's watching this meeting tonight. First off, she is not being truthful to several council members.
Hold on, uh, we're not gonna do that.
I'm just reading straight from the phone.
I understand what you're saying, but we're not gonna be accusatory towards staff.
I'm not being that way, sir. That's why I said-
Mister, Mister Love, we've talked about this. You and I have talked about this.
I'm not calling any councilman out.
Mister Love, we're not gonna call anybody out. If you wanna have this discussion about an individual and about their behavior, I'm happy to have that discussion, but we're gonna do it privately. We're not gonna, we're not gonna publicly impugn anyone.
So anyway, moving forward-
Okay, thank you.
When dogs are adopted, they don't tell the adoption person that this may have been an aggressive dog or is an aggressive dog. First off, I am in very supportive of overturning the pit bull for the owners to be held responsible for actions. And the reason that I ask y'all to witness the dash cam video is 'cause I was personally aggressively attacked by a dog on Saturday. No one in Animal Control showed up. I was informed by the sergeant of IPD. They do not work weekends, zero, none. But here we have a dog that was aggressively after me. My first protection before I ever started videoing it was a lawnmower where I actually stood and threw the lawnmower into the dog. This is not a pit bull, this is a vicious dog. It actually bit the lawnmower. After I let go of the lawnmower, it went off and the dog kept on. This action, the way the dog was so aggressive, my first response for public safety is our police department. But evidently, police or not Animal Control, they're not to protect and serve me as a citizen. And I find that hard to believe, especially when an officer graduates, raises his right hand, takes the oath of obligation to protect and serve the residents in the city of Independence. I personally feel I was not protected because of the vicious dog issues. Then, not only that, the dash cam that I'm asking y'all to look at, you will see this dog come running from the yard after it quote-unquote was put up-
You have one minute.
-chasing a young man on a bicycle. Then, the officer, after me screaming and hollering, came up. The reason he did not come up to start with is because the call that was made to nine-one-one was aggressive animals and a man with a gun. I'm not here to lie, I'm, I, I, I speak the truth. Um, knowing if, and looking at this dog, I knew it had problems. Did not have a collar, did not have a tag, found out where the dog lived, and I started that away. The actions that took place, this dog should be already picked up ever before seven o'clock this morning. Not only that, this residence where the dog is, uh, probably a week or two weeks before this, Animal Control has been to this residence, issued tickets for too many animals on the property. With that being said, it is also, the House has had so many code violations.
And you've got thirty seconds.
So, these rules and procedures that were mentioned tonight, I'm sorry, they're not one-hundred percent truth. That's the sad part. And this dog is still at this residence. Fine action. What if this dog gets out and attacks a woman or attacks a child? Who's at fault? I hate to say this, City of Independence is responsible 'cause Animal Control has not done their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Mister Jason White. You're gonna waive your right to, uh, participate? There we go. Thank you. Uh, with that being said, that brings us to our regular agenda. We've got a second reading for ordinance twenty-three-zero-three-seven. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-three-dash-zero-three-seven, an ordinance submitting to the registered qualified voters of the City of Independence, an ordinance proposing your appeal of the Independent City Code of Ordinances, Section three-point-oh-three-point-oh-oh-six, Keeping of Pit Bulls Prohibited, and a review of Independent City Code of Ordinances, Sections three-point-oh-three-point-oh-oh-seven, Aggressive Dogs, three-point-oh-three-point-oh-oh-eight, Dangerous Dogs, and three-point-oh-three-point-oh-oh-nine, Vicious Dogs, to assure protections for citizens from any dangerous animals. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll, I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, being a non-dog person, and let me clarify that, is, I'm not, I'm not an animal person because I'm highly allergic to dogs, cats, may- maybe not turtles, I don't know, but, um, but I, I know I'm highly allergic to dogs and cats. So, breed-specific legislation wasn't something that I, uh, was familiar with prior to coming on the council. It did come up several, several times when I was campaigning, but until now, the council hasn't had enough agreement to address it. The initiative petition process has worked in that it has met the charter requirements to mandate the council to take action. Over the past several months, I've received what I'm sure is well over a hundred emails. I've listened to many speakers here at council meetings. I've talked to my colleagues and staff. I've met with people that have been affected by this. In all these interactions, I've heard from a large number of people on both sides of this issue. In addition to this, I've done a fair amount of research on my own to try to better understand the issue and possible solutions. As a result, I've come to several conclusions. The primary thing that I have concluded is that the ordinances and practices we have in place at this time are not working. If they were, our shelter wouldn't be full of pit bulls because every pit bull that was in the city when the ordinance was adopted would be long gone by now. Instead, we likely have as many, if not more, pit bull-type dogs in Independence as we did when the ban was put in place. There can be little argument that this ban is not discriminatory against good, quote, "good" pit bull dogs. Um, the way in which it has affected our animal control operations has, to at least some degree, been non-productive. And while we haven't had any more attacks like the one that affected Mister Hill, it's very hard to say that the current ban has really had any impact on that. In fact, we've received numerous reports of late from citizens of alleged pit bull attacks. Finally, the safety of our citizens is what has to be paramount in this decision. And there's no way to directly correlate the relationship between this ban and the desire for safer independence. So I'm voting against putting this language on the ballot tonight and will be voting at our next meeting to repeal the current, current ordinance. I've been elected to represent our community and make tough decisions, and spending up to two-hundred thousand dollars is, for an election, is sidestepping the issue for political expediency. The ordinance to reveal the ban that we consider on June fifth directs the city manager to review our code regarding aggressive, dangerous, and vicious dogs. If the goal is to provide safer independence for our citizens, I'm asking the city manager to draft a revision to the current ordinances to do the following. Better define the breeds of dogs we consider aggressive or dangerous so that our city code does not discriminate against one breed, but addresses these types of animals regardless of breed. In most cases, it's people that are the problem. I'm suggesting we improve the language of the code to better address people who do not care for or contain their dogs in such a way that it creates safety issues for our community. This includes increasing the maximum, minimum and maximum fine violations if possible. Enhancing the code regarding licensing, mandatory spay and neutering, chipping, muzzling when in public, fencing, insurance requirements, banning breeding, and any other efforts that can help control these ki- types of dangerous animals. We need, we've talked about this tonight already, but we need better education of our community in regards to the dangerous dog ordinances we have in place and how to stay informed on requirements the city has in place and how to access services when the problems arise. And probably the most importantly, we need to ask him to recommend ways to increase the ability of the city's animal control officers to respond to situations of concern. This is to include the ability to respond after normal working hours and on the weekends as we know dogs don't just cause problems between eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday. As we've heard from our Health and Animal Services Director, we only have four animal control officers. Our ordinance is only as good as its enforcement, and we have to prioritize safety of our residents. Although I'm, I know this to be a very busy time dealing with our budget, I'm asking this to be done and brought back to the council in thirty to forty-five days. Most everyone I've talked to agrees that the safety of our citizens needs to be paramount. One should not have to fear being attacked by any type of dog when they go out on their daily activities. Owners of any type of dog need to care for and control their ad- their animals in a prudent fashion and make sure they're not causing a problem for their neighbors. As we look at possible changes to the, improve the city code, these are the types of concerns I hope we can address. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, I don't have a problem with pit bulls. I don't have a problem with anybody who owns pit bulls. In fact, I pers- I actually owned a pit bull twenty-five years ago. For the last three years, I've been, um, I've, I've heard about this multiple, multiple times on people, both sides of the issue. And for these, those three years, I've said that if it comes before this council, I would vote to send it to the ballot, and that's exactly what I will be voting to do tonight. Um, because if I do anything less than that, um, it would make me a liar, and believe it or not, even I'm a politician, I've, I'm, I try to, uh, value my integrity, so, that's what I've been saying, so that's what I'm going to do. Um, the other reason, I, I don't even have an issue with this ban being overturned. I just don't think the city council should be the one that does it. I think the vote of the people should do it. And I know there's gonna be some people that disagree with me. I think this issue is very divided. I think if there was a vote, it could go fifty-one, forty-nine, and anybody who doesn't just look one city north of us. Four years ago, they sent theirs to the ballot, and it was repealed by a hundred and sixty-one votes. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Um, I'm gonna echo some of the things that Councilmember Fierce said. Uh, this was not on my radar until I knocked doors for my campaign, and I was amazed by the people who came and talked about this issue at the door. And interestingly, none of the people who talked to me at the door have come to testify. So it's just regular folks out there trying to do their thing, have their dogs. Um, since I didn't know anything, I did my homework. Um, I wanted to know how we got here from two thousand and six when it was enacted, what the enforcement looked like, what has the data shown? So I asked the City of Independence for bite data. Could they give it to me for the ten years before the ordinance and the ten years after? The easiest, natural experiment. Unfortunately, we don't keep data that long, so there wasn't an easy, uh, comparison. You would expect that once you ban these animals, that we would no longer be bringing them into shelter. We're still taking a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty of these animals into shelter every year. So if the supply went away, we wouldn't expect us to have that many animals. So, I mean, by extrapolation, you can assume that there are hundreds of these dogs that are currently living in the city of Independence. Next, I went to Jackson County because if we've adopted out more than a thousand of these animals, they should have seen a commensurate increase in their bite data. So, we looked at data from twenty-eleven to twenty-seventeen. There was a little bit of year-to-year variation, but nothing that you wouldn't expect for some small population growth, so relatively stable. Um, and then looking at the finances, uh, there was an analysis done by Denver and by Overland Park as they looked at their ordinances, and they showed that there was a significant, a significant cost to both cities in the need for animal officers for confrontation with citizens when they were taking animals away, um, keeping those animals in shelter, in some cases having to euthanize animals so they couldn't adopt out, and then the cost to a city for businesses that chose not to locate there and people who chose not to move there, who wanted to follow the ordinance as, as it was written. We haven't done that kind of financial analysis, but I think you can extrapolate from those two cities during their, uh, evaluation. And then I went and looked at the federal agency that was responsible for public health, and the CDC has policy statements that breed bans don't meet, meet the objective of making communities safer. So then looking at what other local cities have done, uh, in the early two thousand, there were all kinds of breed bans that went into effect. But as communities had time to evaluate the pros and cons of those, the number of bans that were rescinded started to increase. And in the last ten years, bans have been repealed in Liberty, Excelsior Springs, Overland Park, Sugar Creek, Buckner, Grandview, Riverside, Greenwood, Prairie Village, Shawnee, Roland Park, Bonner Springs, Kansas City, Kansas, Fairway, Kansas, and fifteen other municipalities. I fully understand why this got enacted in two thousand and six, but now that we've had seventeen years to look at this policy, the question is, did it solve the problem that we thought it was going to? We have as many or more dogs than before the ban. The number in bites in the communities that haven't banned them have not had a commensurate increase. We're spending money to enact this ban and to keep dogs in shelter, which is not a great place for dogs. And instead, we can concentrate those dollars on enforcing our dangerous dog ordinance. Um, I think we have a shared goal. We want a community that's welcoming, welcoming, but it has safeguards in place. I think we have the opportunity to enhance our current dangerous, vicious, and dog, and, uh, dog ordinance and do our best. It won't be perfect, but we learn, we revise. That's what good public policy is. I think we have the opportunity to do better things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, three years ago when I ran, uh, I, I was, I was asked this question a lot, um, about the, the BSL. I know that it's not popular, but it was, it's the law in our city. My position was, and it still remains, bring us the signatures and we'll send it to the voters. There's been, over three years, lots of emails that have come telling us, just overturn it, overturn it, overturn it. Um, and my response is always the same. Go get the signatures and we'll, we'll send it to the, the voters. Let everyone have a voice. And up until this point, we haven't been able to get those signatures. As soon as I found out that Lucy Young and Jason White were heading it up, I told many of my colleagues, prepare. They're gonna get those signatures. That day has come. Here's my problem. For, well, a year ago, this question came up in, uh, some of the forums, and the candidates at that time said that they would be in favor of overturning it. Weeks and weeks ago, we began to meet and talk about that possibility. I knew this night was gonna come. My problem is, I'd be willing to overturn it if we had something really strong in place that didn't discriminate against a breed, but took public safety and the well-being of all the animals in place that keeps us safe, keeps you safe, and doesn't mistreat the dogs. I had no problem with that, but we've reached this climax point where now we're ready to say, we're gonna take and we're gonna remove this, but we don't have anything in place. We don't have it ready. And so, I, I'm, I'm just gonna say that this is not a surprise. It's not a surprise to me. It shouldn't be a surprise to anyone up here. But no work has been done to put something in place of something that we're gonna remove. Whether you think that it was effective or you don't, I think that it's responsible government to have something ready to go, something stronger, something better, that doesn't compromise on the public safety and the well-being of the animals. And I think that that's doable, but the work hasn't been put in place. So, my vote tonight is gonna be what it's, what I said always, bring us the signatures. You've done that. Good job. Now I'd say, and I had three phone calls today, people that don't come up and aren't standing at a podium, they want their voices heard, and they want it heard through the democratic fashion of voting. And so tonight, I'm gonna vote, just like I said I would three years ago, to send it to the voters. And in the meantime, we're gonna work on something better. You may not like it, but we have a responsibility for the public safety of everyone and for the dogs. And we can do this, and we can get it done. And I, I hope that that's a priority. It needs to be. And then the last component of it's gonna be enforcement. 'Cause you can have all the strength and ordinance you want. If you don't have any enforcement, all you have is words on paper, and everybody is frustrated, this, the public safety is diminished, and the dogs aren't better off. So we got a lot of work to do, and we have to be honest about it. And if we're not, then shame on us, right? So, that's where I'll be tonight. I know it's not what you wanna hear, but that's what I believe is the right approach.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else?
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. So, I, um, I had a dog, I had a whippet named Yoda, and, uh, I considered myself a bit of a dog whisperer. I watched that show, it was really popular, you know? He, uh, two thousand and three to two thousand and fourteen, uh, he stayed a lot with my parents, so if you run into him, uh, they'll tell you how smart he was and well behaved. He was not like, uh, Mister White's dog at all. He never would have bitten or been aggressive, never was. He was amazing and awesome. Uh, he did kill a number of stray cats that wandered into the yard because sighthounds chase things and kill things, and he caught a bird in midair. I kid you not. He could kill rabbits, just, whippets are cool. Uh, they're, they were designed for that, and they're pretty awesome. Um, if you haven't seen him before, look him up. Uh, so, I love dogs, absolutely love dogs. Uh, and I think I'm awesome at dogs, and here's the list of dogs that have bitten me in my life. Uh, Chow, pit bull, German shepherd, cocker spaniel, several mutts, uh, Chihuahua, and most lately, uh, Pekinese, who I still have a bruise on my thumbnail from it. Uh, so, you know, I'm not particularly afraid of dogs. So, you know, I'm not particularly afraid of dogs. Mr. White also has personally witnessed that. My dog whispering leads me into stupid situations from time to time. I also take full responsibility for my stupidity and would not ever blame a dog for something that I caused. So, I don't like to get into the part about animals that act out of fear or for other reasons. I know that, from time to time, dogs do things out of instinct, just like people do. So, I don't like that part of the discussion. And a lot of this discussion that's happened over the last couple of months has gotten into that part. I've gotten a lot of emails that get into that part. I don't like that, and I don't think it's relevant. I've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls about people that talk about very specific behaviors. Again, I don't think it's particularly relevant. The dogs are here, and again, the ban's not been effective. No one really can argue that. But I do wanna say this about people's concerns. Pit Bulls, there is no question that, in the right circumstance, a pit bull can be dangerous, along with many other types of dogs. And I think, in repealing the ban, that it is our obligation to put some other controls in place. And we certainly have an obligation to do that. We do need to consider some of these other ordinances, some of these other regulations, some of these other controls that other places have used. We do need to do some better practices or some best practices. Some of them may be palatable, some of them may not. Some of them may not be as popular or seem quite as nice, or may not sit as well with everyone. But you certainly will not have to live under the cloud of no pit bulls that you've had to live under. I think we will remove that cloud. And it's time, and it should be removed. And that much we can give you. So, I will be voting to not send this to a public vote. And in two weeks, I will be voting to repeal the ban. I am gonna propose also, however, at that time, and I will be discussing this with my colleagues in the meantime, I'm gonna propose a sixty-day stay on that repeal. My colleagues do make a good point and a valid point. The timing, I can't say that it snuck up on us, but we have not invested the time in this that we sort of needed to. I will be proposing a stay on the enforcement. I will be asking for a stay on, so that we can invest the time and energy and so that staff can invest the time and energy they need to, so that we can get through budget properly and then also invest some time in ironing out whatever upgrades we need to make to the ordinances. We do need to get that in place, so that we can do what we can. As far as upgrading animal control coverage, our budget is tight. Anybody that's been watching that lately, or for our former councilpeople, Ms. Young, I can't see you behind that sign. Hopefully, you can hear me through your hat. She knows what budget time is like. It's not changed much in twenty years. So, it's tight. Everything in the budget is expensive. My fellow councilmembers make good points. If there's a way, and I know, Mr. City Manager, we've discussed this with you repeatedly, some might say we've beaten you to death with it these last few days and over the weekend, but certainly, we're digging through the couch cushions, looking for some extra dollars to spend toward this effort. That would be nice, if we're able to do that, to add some weekend coverage, if at all possible, or to add some extra coverage, that would be really nice. But I think that's where I'm at. So, I've talked to several of you individually. I haven't talked to you all, don't have all your phone numbers, and I know there's even more of you than are here tonight, but just let me say, I appreciate very much the effort, the time, the dedication. Initiative petitions are just a fantastic exercise of your right to democracy. And it is, they are rarely used and rarely successful, rarely. It is a rare combination of the stars aligning that this came together. And take away any single one of you and the people not in this room, and it would have failed. And that is the absolute truth, whether it's a leader, or the ASPCA, or any one person that signed the very last signature or the very first signature. So, you were a part of something special, actually, a very special thing. So, you should be quite proud of yourself. This is democracy in action, really very neat. So, I frankly am honored to be on a council while you've done this thing. And thank you for that, from my perspective. So, thank you.
Okay. I guess I'll give my two cents worth, but a lot of them took my time, so that is excellent, because they actually, I mean, didn't take my time, but actually made my discussion much shorter because of their arguments. But I bet you haven't heard this before, I walked six thousand doors when I was running for office. I did that to win a bet, so that's why I said that. Please forgive me. In all seriousness, that experience helped me understand the deeply-held emotions that people have about this breed-specific legislation. For many of you, this ordinance is viewed as discriminatory and is ineffective. For others, the ordinance is viewed as critically important to our public safety. Both positions are impassioned, and both positions have merit. During my time as a state representative, this issue came up every year. We actually have lobbyists in the building who know that it came up every year. And I got to listen to the drone of my colleagues for hours on end about the pros and the cons of this issue. At the end of the day, it is my belief that continuing BSL in Independence should be repealed. And here are some of the reasons that I believe this way. BSL's been ineffective. We probably have more pit bulls today than we ever had. So, how do we, in fact, protect people with this as a known fact? Some of my colleagues said that we should put this to the vote of the people. I disagree with that for a couple of reasons. Number one, our budget is very tight, and I'm not gonna spend $200,000 to ask a question I'm pretty confident we know the answer to. The reason I know that is because I stood at a polling location to ask people that specific question. If you were given the opportunity to go to a poll, what would you do? The majority, not an overwhelming majority, and not a conclusive majority beyond a reasonable doubt, but enough in my confidence that I today would vote to repeal this. And I will not send it to the voters because of the expense involved. Councilmember McHalest did an excellent job listing all of the cities that have actually repealed this, and I agree with her completely. BSL can create a climate of fear and distrust. BSL can make people afraid of all dogs, even those that are not dangerous. I'm a dog lover, we have three dogs that live in our house. I hope that, Director, I am not in violation of any codes. I didn't want the officers to come up immediately and put handcuffs on me and take me off. So, you did make a move, so I think I'm safe there. Might have to go to the appeal process. BSL is based on the assumption that all dogs of certain breed are dangerous, which is simply not true. There are many, many individual dogs of every breed who are perfectly safe and well-behaved. And then, there are dogs, when they're put in a bad situation, act poorly, like many of us, when we're put in a bad situation. So, we need to focus on ownership rather than targeting specific breeds. We need to focus on promoting education and responsible dog owner practices. We need to implement mandatory, maybe possibly mandatory vaccinations, looking at spay and neutering, because we know that that, in fact, limits dogs' ability to be aggressive. Looking more carefully at our leash laws, education programs to be more effective, and how can we partner with nonprofit groups to make that happen? Some of my colleagues have said tonight that we have not worked on this issue. I have met with the ASPCA, I have met with the Humane Society. We have talked about this legislation, and I have asked them their opinion on this legislation and what do other cities do with regards to best practices. So, from my perspective, I have worked on this issue, and I have listened to many sides of this issue. Repealing BSL will allow the staff to focus on more effective ways to prevent dog bites, such as responsible pet ownership, education, enforcement laws against animal cruelty. I thought it was very, very compelling tonight, Director, when you talked about leash laws and putting dogs on chains. It saddens me to see some dogs left on chains twenty-four hours on end. So, repealing this would also help to ensure that all dogs, regardless of breed, are treated fairly and humanely. And we all want that, regardless of what side of this issue we are on. The citizens have done their part on utilizing this tool of democracy and to bring this initiative petition forward. In my opinion, they've done an extraordinary job, because many, 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 many petitions fail to hit the finish line. They not only hit the finish line, they blew past it almost twice. This process has forced our hand as a council, and it has turned our responsibilities to deal with this issue as elected officials. Tonight, we're taking the first step to vote to not send this to a vote of the people because we're required to by timing and because of the way the charter is written. So, we'll take that action. We will then look at, and I agree with my Councilmember Hobart's process of maybe putting a sixty-day stay on enforcement, and then looking at working together as a body to see what is the best practice that we should do going forward. So, that's my statement. Anyone else have anything else to say to follow up? With that being said, we've got a second read in front of us. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
McHalest?
No.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Roland?
No. And putting the issue on the ballot fails by a vote of five to two. That'll bring us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero three eight, an ordinance repealing independent city code of ordinances, section three point oh three point oh oh six, keeping of pit bulls prohibited, and ordering a review of independent city code of ordinances, sections three point oh three oh oh seven, aggressive dogs, three point oh three oh oh eight, dangerous dogs, and three point oh three point oh oh nine, vicious dogs.
Any discussion? I know we typically don't have discussion on first reads, but you're certainly, the floor is open if you'd like to.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
We've touched on a few things tonight. Mr. City Manager, if I could, please, just ask you a couple of questions. How many square miles does Independence have?
Seventy-eight.
How many animal control officers do we have?
We are authorized and currently staffed for four.
Four, to cover seventy-eight square miles. I struggle with our ability to cover seventy-eight square miles with four code enforcement officers. I don't care what kind of ordinance you have. That's a big task. So, did it fail because it didn't work, or did it fail because we couldn't enforce it? That's the real question. And I think that whatever we do from this point, we have to have an honest discussion on how we're going to, and what we're going to ask animal control to be responsible for, for anything that we change. Even if we change nothing, how do we enforce seventy-eight square miles with four animal control officers? It's a daunting task, and I do think it deserves a conversation. And I do think it deserves some expansion. And I do think we need to put some safety measures in place to make them successful, to keep our residents safe. I don't care, that has been the first priority of government since its creation. It's the general protection and the welfare of the people. That is what we have to begin to talk about. I haven't heard any conversation about any of this, ideas. I haven't heard anything. But I know that when residents call and they can't get anybody to respond, that's the wrong message. That doesn't say that your safety's our priority as a city. Could I ask, just indulge me, and could Chief Desmond come up for a second?
If I could, Mr. Councilmember, if I could ask Mr. Walker to answer any of your questions, because he's got the basic background for that, if I could indulge you to do that.
Are you asking him to answer a question?
Yeah, I'm asking Mr. Walker to answer your questions for you, if I could, please.
You don't want the chief to come up here, is that what you're saying?
I really prefer not to have any directors come up unless they're invited ahead of time and they know that we're gonna have the discussion. I don't wanna put anybody on the spot. That's my concern. Mr. Walker is here, and I, Mr. Walker, are you happy to answer his questions?
Give it a shot.
Okay. If that's okay, Councilmember.
Well, I mean, that's what you're saying, so if you're gonna override my request, that's fine. Mr. Walker, has, IPD had situations where they have addressed an aggressive dog and have not been able to have animal control respond. Were they unavailable? Did they not come out?
What I'm aware of are situations where you've got these aggressive, vicious, dangerous dogs, whatever the categorization may be. When that dog is presenting that clear and present danger, our police and/or fire make that call to animal control, and then that judgment call gets made about whether or not they're gonna respond. Is there anything else I should add for any of you?
Looks like, generally speaking.
Okay, so they're triaging the call?
That's a good word, yes, sir.
And just determining whether they're gonna come out or not? What authority does the IFD and IPD have if they can't get anybody to respond to ensure their safety or the public safety? What can they do?
In those circumstances, and please don't take this that I'm pitting any of the departments, they have good working relationships one another, but, you know, each department has the jurisdiction that they have under the code. So, in that circumstance, they are at the mercy of animal control services. And again, that's not at all commentary on their discretion or judgment, it's just the way the code is written, there are areas that each department has jurisdiction over, and that jurisdiction only carries so far.
I understand. And the reason why I'm hitting on this is because there are times when we're not able to get animal control out, after five and on the weekends. Public safety doesn't have downtime. It's twenty-four-seven. That's the community that we have, that's the society that we live in. It needs to have some assurances from the city that when they have a need, whether it's for a dog...
it's for a dog, or as we had one yesterday, a bat in a backyard that was not well, and the dog and the kids were screaming, and the dog was trying to get to the bat, and they could not get anyone to come out and remove the bat. And I got a call this morning at, I think it was eight o'clock, and they had not heard from animal control regarding the bat. My point is, if we don't have the mechanism in place to enforce any ordinances, we're not benefiting anyone. We don't benefit the citizens, we don't benefit the pets. We have to be real about it. And I get it, our budget's tight, but I think we need to begin to look at and work on what coverage looks like that's realistic and what's expected of us. And sometimes, we have to go beyond the dollars and cents to ensure that all these folks are protected at night. So, I think about those things. I've talked about these things. I'm willing to talk about them, and I hope that we can make it a point to strengthen our ability to enforce. So, while some say it's ineffective because we have more pit bulls than ever, to me, that's just a failure of enforcement. And not that I agree with it, I'm just saying that's a part of it. And so, whatever we do, we have to have enforcement. And so, I hope that my colleagues will work diligently to see that we help our animal control be more successful and not exhausted trying to cover, that's like one per district. So, whatever we do, I just hope that we're, we take it serious, that we have to be able to enforce our ordinances from this point forward. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's the end of the first reading, and we'll have the second reading at our next Madam City Clerk, just have information only, and then councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing tonight?
Councilmember Steinmeier? Councilmember McCandless? Councilmember Hobart? Okay. I think that's, wow, I've never seen that happen before, so. And we've got the news agencies to record that. We've never had, no member of councilmember comments, so I'm not going to break the streak. So, with that, I will, in fact, call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.